Test, test.
Mr. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in a spirit of fairness. Write of thought and speech. Import your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, as Chairman of the Board of Warren County Commissioners, I engage in an emergency meeting in regards to the Confederate statue that remains on the Courthouse Square. At this time, before we get into deliberation amongst the Commissioners about that, I have allowed citizens' comments up to two minutes. Two minutes. Ms. Angelina? Please call the first citizen comment, please. Could he come here? I'm sorry. Paul, do you have me? That's right. Thank you, Paul. Just be loud and give him mine. Just be loud.
Oh, well, my name is Bob Bridgen. I live in New Orleans. I've been a lifelong resident, I'm sorry. Okay. My name is Bob Bridgen, I live in New Orleans. I'm a Warren County resident for just about all my life. I would hate mighty bad for repeat of what happened in Raleigh this past Friday night to occur here in Warren County. Like my daddy used to say, "I hope we were raised better than that." What I would like to see is the Confederate monument relocated off of public property onto private land so that the people who find it offensive don't have to look at it and those who have an interest in history and of our ancestors can still have access to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. I'm William Darnell, I'm a resident in New Orleans also. I've lived in New Orleans for a number of years now. My family goes back to New Orleans until early 1800s. I have ancestors that fought in the Civil War, ancestors that died in the Civil War. The monument up here in town, and it's not a statue, it is a monument. It's a monument of those men that fought and died and the families that erected that for them in their memory after the war was over. A lot of these people owned slaves, a lot of them didn't. I don't know who was who, okay? A lot of these people fought for what they were hoping to be a free country of their own. It wasn't about slavery to many of these people. Some, we know it was, okay? They didn't own slaves. It's been illegal to own slaves since then. I have worked like a slave in my lifetime, it kind of made me wonder sometimes. I worked in the state of North Carolina 31 years. I worked hot in Lawrence Glass for 12 before that. I didn't have an easy road to hope, don't want one now, never expected for somebody to give me one. I've worked and I still work a little bit, I'm retired. That monument is a monument to a lost cause to... Do you know how many people here know how many million died in that war? Between 650 and 700,000. That monument is to those men who died and their families who were left behind. It is history, you can't rewrite it. You can only do it again. And that's what I don't want to see happen. I wish everybody in this country could come together for a common cause. That's what we need. We don't need to be in fight. These people don't need to be coming from California flying in here like they did in Washington DC last night trying to tear up Teddy Roosevelt statue? I guess any statue do, they got George Washington's, they got Teddy Roosevelt. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Can you all hear me? You can't, it's small. Can everyone hear me? Good evening, my name is Mike Williams. I come to you as a native of this county. I come to you as a son of this county, someone whose prime tobacco picked cucumbers. Somebody who's also told the stories of this county across the world. This is home. I only have two minutes, but I'll say one, the eyes of the world are watching us right now. History is watching us right now. The legacies of this decision will ripple for generations to come. A lot of people in this community are saying that people aren't talking about this. This isn't something that has been discussed for years around. Well, it has been. It's just that it's been discussed in spaces where a lot of people have not been. And now, we're going through a history where people have the opportunity to have their voices heard. It's not about a single history. It's about a pluralistic history, a history where all voices, all backgrounds are honored. And it's unfortunate that we're here right now. I sit up late thinking about this very decision, that's why I was in here tonight. Understand this, the Confederacy lasts for five years. Five years, your heritage is much more than that. I have a Southern heritage, I am proud of that heritage, but it has nothing to do with the monuments. Historical context, people. That statue was raised in 1913. Forty-eight years after the fall of the Confederacy, April 9th, 1865, in Appomattox. Why wait 48 years? What was happening during that time? The NDLACP formed out of the Niagara Movement in 1909, four years before that statue was raised. What was going on in our country at that time that allowed this to happen? It's about movements, people. It's about movements. Be the change, change is happening now, relocate it. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? I'm a loud talker. My name is Kim Rose, I've lived in Warrenton, I'm a visitor, I've only been here 35-plus years, so I'm not homegrown, but I love this county. I chose to move here because this is the nicest, sweetest place and I've lived in a lot of different places in my lifetime, but this is what I call home and I call it home because I love each and every person in it. They're very special. I'm sorry I haven't met some of you tonight, but I have met a few of you since I've been here. Community is very important to me and I think it should be important to all of us. And what I would urge us to do, the young man that just spoke, I can't deny anything that he said, but what I would say, we all are at a point right now where emotions are high and this is the time when we need to come together, not do more divisive stuff. And I know everyone is watching, but I would like to set an example with our community because that's what we are. I have never had an ill will with anyone in this county ever in the 35-plus years I've been here and I've interacted with a lot of people here. We've had lots of conversations about this monument, statue, however you want to call it. I want to say that we define who we are. A monument doesn't define who we are. It does have history to it and there are a lot of monuments out there and there's probably going to be a lot more monuments coming up. You know, I think there's some others that could be put up for really outstanding men and women that have come through this world. But I think we define, each one of us define who we are and we can all love ourselves and we should love each other and just know that we are a community and don't let our high emotions right now define who we are.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your comments. Right now, I'm going to entertain comments from any board of Commissioner who would like to make comments at this time. If you'd like to make comments, you can.
Say really quickly, since we got notice of the meeting today, you know, I had a few phone calls. And I mean, it's been heavy on my mind, even when Commissioner Davis had called me maybe a week or two ago and brought up the idea of moving the monument. It was like, okay, where do we go from here? Like, what needs to happen here? Because initially it was, this is state property, it can't be moved or the legislature has ownership of it, so we can't do anything with it. Then it became, well, we need to, there's an exception or there's a clause that if we can't protect it. Well, my thought is, if we're going to move it, move it once and be done with it because Warren County is by no means a high-growth county to simply be relocating statues or monuments and then having to relocate them again. But it just doesn't stop with that monument. When I got the call, it was the question on the fountains. It was the question that then became Buck Springs. You know, you cannot erase history, you absolutely cannot erase history. It's written. But I do want us to act, you know, as a board and that everyone have a vote on this, but I absolutely want to make sure that when we move it, if we decide to move it, that it's done once. And that's my comment. Oh, and I'm sorry, and then there was the other comment from a citizen. You know, because it was really last minute and so you had people who were calling and then today I was working, so I really have a whole lot of time to spend looking at this. But there was also a question of, could it wait until November and put on the ballot? And I was like, that's a good question. But I don't think the way that it's set up, that we'll have that option, that it is something that we can actually let our citizens decide whether or not that's what they want to do. But it would have been a great idea if it were possible and I don't know if we have time to research to see if that's possible before something else happens. I just don't want us to act in haste, you know? And I think there still needs to be some explanation of how we got to here. Not because what's going on in Raleigh, but what's going on in Warren County. So I hope before any vote is taken, that we actually understand what has happened here to get us to this point.
Anybody else have a comment? Go ahead, Miss. Absolutely.
I would like to make a comment. This is something that has weighed heavily on my mind for a long time. I love Warren County and I'm sort of a native son because I've been here most of my life. What happened in Raleigh the other night brought great concern to me because these were outsiders coming in, creating a situation in Raleigh. And the other night I saw on the news where I think it's an app where they have identified every statue and monument in North Carolina. And I would like to at least let the citizens and this board make decisions for Warren County rather than some radical group from the outside coming in dictating what we should do. And if I were to vote, and I'll be honest with what this is, what my convictions are basically. Public safety, it's a high concern. Unity in this county. Peace and the protection of the local businesses on Main Street. Because if we have outside people coming in, we don't know what they may or may not do. So these are the things that I have taken into consideration in making my decision if we get to a point to vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments from Board of Commissioners? Paul, are you speaking a bit closer to that mic, Miss?
Just today, as you all said, this was a little rush meeting and I didn't call any of you because the messages were sent to all of us that we received, except one, I received one that was sent directly to me. But it seemed like our citizens have some ideas about what they would like to do with the statue and how they would like to have it done. And some of them seem...
I totally agree with them. And I also would like for all the citizens here in Warren County be more partial about determining what to do with that statue. And somewhere along the line, we're going to have more discussion. And you can't please everyone, whether you move it, take it down, or destroy it or what. But I would never like to see anyone coming to this town, this county, and destroy it. I came back 20 years ago because I loved it, I was born here. And I just go along...
Thank you, Miss Paul. So ladies and gentlemen, let's be clear of why we're here today and what we're discussing. And I think that, I think all the comments tonight are warranted. But let's think about our role as county government. Our role as county government is often for protection and the overall aspects of the livelihood of citizens in Warren County. And I can't make it any clearer of what Commissioner Hunt said. As elected officials and leaders in this county, if we stand back and we watch what's going on throughout this country, country Warren County, there are businesses, livelihoods that cannot sustain the impact of doing nothing. Yes, we can do things together in a fashion that's peaceful and listening to each other. But there are individuals out there that do things basically in a different way. And I believe in the spirit of Warren County citizens that we can, whether you agree or disagree about history or the future, that we can do things in a manner that is peaceful. I've had conversations with several constituents today about this. And my question to them is, do you have in mind to preserve history, whether in any form? They're pulling them down, they're defacing, painting them, they're doing all sorts of things to them. We as county government have a due regard to set the standard for the community. We have a due regard for the protection of the citizens. That's what we do. It's a hard choice. You said so yourself, you can't please everybody. Well, we're not trying to please everybody. We're basically trying to do what is right. What is right at this point in time is to protect the people of this county or passing through, the property of this county. That's what we are tasked to do. And that's the reason why this emergency meeting was called. Because doing nothing is not an option. If you don't believe me, turn on Fox News, turn on CNN. They will show you that doing nothing is not an option. We have a due regard as elected officials to keep this community together. And a lot of times, that is making the hard decisions. But making right decisions. Ladies and gentlemen of this board, before us, we have a task. The task is, whether we are going to leave the Confederate monument that's located on the Courthouse Square where it is or pursuant to the general statue. And I'm going to ask Mr. Kingsbury if he would read that general statue that... And I'm going to ask Mr. Kingsbury if he would read that general statue that gives us provision to do the necessary action here tonight, whether we're going to leave it in place or we're going to remove it. Ms. Kingsbury.
Good afternoon, members of the board and the public. North Carolina General Statute 100-2.1. The title is Protection of Monuments, Memorials, and Works of Art. Section A, approval required. Except as otherwise provided in subsection B of this section, a monument, memorial, or work of art owned by the state may not be removed, relocated, or altered in any way without the approval of the North Carolina Historical Commission. Section B, limitations on removal. An object of remembrance located on public property may be, may not be permanently removed and may only be relocated, whether temporarily or permanently, under the circumstances listed in this subsection and subject to the limitations in this subsection. An object of remembrance that is temporarily relocated shall be returned to its original location within 90 days of completion of the project that required its temporary removal. An object of remembrance that is permanently relocated shall be relocated to a site of similar prominence, honor, visibility, availability, and access that are within the boundaries of the jurisdiction from which it was relocated. An object of remembrance may not be relocated to a museum, cemetery, or mausoleum unless it was originally placed at such a location. As used in this section, the term "object of remembrance" means a monument, memorial, plaque, statue, marker, or display of a permanent character that commemorates an event, a person, or military service that is part of North Carolina's history. The circumstances under which an object of remembrance may be relocated are either of the following. Number one, when appropriate measures are required by the state or a political subdivision of the state to preserve the object. Number two, when necessary for construction, renovation, or reconfiguration of buildings, open spaces, parking, or transportation projects. Section C, exceptions. This section does not apply to the following. Highway markers set up by the Board of Transportation in cooperation with the Department of Environmental Quality and the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources as provided by Chapter 197 of the Public Laws of 1935. Second exception, an object of remembrance owned by a private party that is located on public property and that is a subject of a legal agreement between the private party and the state or a political subdivision of the state governing the removal or relocation of the object. Number three, an object of remembrance for which a building inspector or similar official has determined poses a threat to public safety because of an unsafe or dangerous condition. That is the statute. Would you like just some explanation briefly?
Yes, please.
All right. In 2017, this issue came before the Board of Commissioners in September. The Warren Record posted two articles, one in August and one in September. In the August article, it clearly identified that this monument was donated or given to the county in October 29, 1913. And it was accepted, the monument was accepted by the county by Charles Moore of Littleton, a member of the Board of Commissioners. The second article posted in September was when it came to the board's attention and it, I think it came around the time of Trayvon Martin's untimely passing or execution. And in that meeting, I gave the advice that the county not move the monument because it didn't have the authority to do so, which I still stand by. You only can remove it or relocate it if it falls in one of the exceptions. So today we are here with what's called a public safety issue. So under the exceptions, a memorial or object of remembrance may be relocated temporarily or permanently to preserve the object. And preserving the object includes damage to the object or some threat from the outside to the object. It can also be removed with no restriction on relocation or putting it back if there is a public safety issue. And that public safety issue includes, has been interpreted to include the item or the monument causing a public safety hazard, or within the community, it causes some havoc. So based on the guidance, which I think I sent to all the commissioners from the UMC School of Government, the statute and the articles, it is my opinion that it can be relocated and it can also be removed due to the climate that we are in with the threat to its not being preserved in public safety.
Chairman Davis.
Yes.
And again, the reason why we're here, so that we're kind of clear, not only what Attorney Kingsbury has said, but because you said that you have received calls of threat to the monument. That puts us in this place to say the threat is real and therefore we should take action, correct?
State your comment, please.
What's that?
State your comment, please.
It was a question. Can we not ask questions of the board?
Continue.
So I want to make sure that we're acting accordingly because we're saying it is a public safety risk to the citizens of Warren County. But I want everyone to know that the threat is real and that's the reason why we're here tonight, so that we can take action and be within statute and not simply just take it down. But we want to make sure that we're ensuring the safety of our citizens because the threat is real. But if that's not the case, then it kind of makes us, you know, or at least makes me have hesitation as to why we're here. We need to be very clear that the threat is real, that there is a public safety issue in Warren County.
Commissioner Pierce, the reason why I didn't answer because I wanted you to finish your comment, and that is correct. There have been numerous, numerous Facebook messages out there, however you want to categorize it. And, you know, whether some of them will come into tuition or not, well, we as county officials cannot do that because whether you like it or not, based upon what Mr. Kingsbury has said, we have a due regard as commissioners to protect persons and property. Well, whether you like the Confederate statue or not, it's part of our property. And if we sit back and do nothing, then I think that we fail to do our due diligence as commissioners to protect the property within Warren County's limits. Because as you can see by just go to Raleigh or wherever you want to go, they're taking the ropes and they're pulling them down, people potentially are getting hurt, they're dragging them through the streets. I think I've seen where they've thrown them in the river and did whatever. Well, I think we're better than that. I know we're better than that. And yes, we will have the conversation in regards to where the statue should be relocated to or be done with, yeah, that's a further, but absolutely doing nothing because I do not want to see us on the front page of a riot downtown Warren County or somebody's taking that statue down and just doing whatever, or somebody getting hurt. That's why we're here. I think when Mr. Kingsbury said if we elect to take the statue down, then it would be secured in a, later on we determine what happens to it. Is that correct, Mr. Kingsbury?
You can. You have two ways, you can relocate it temporarily or permanently to protect the statue itself, or you can, the statue allows permanent removal in order to keep public safety.
Exactly. Go ahead, Ms. Hunt. Then Ms. Baker, please. Okay, Ms. Baker, then Ms. Hunt.
Okay. Okay. I have a question for you, Mr. Kingsbury. I know we have had a few people that have removed the statues and it seemed to have been peaceful. I'm just wondering, it's just if...
Thank you for asking that. I happened to look into that and the good thing is the county would have no liability if something were to happen. But, and I don't make the decision on where it goes, but my suggestion would be to relocate it very secretly and to a undisclosed location. Secretly to a undisclosed location. No mail, but that's not under my burden.
Ms. Hunt?
I think everybody has some very legitimate concerns. This is a situation of urgency from my perspective and we got time to work out some of the other details. If we try to get everything worked out before we make a decision, I still believe that somebody's going to come in here and make the decision for us. So based on what the attorney said and if I interpreted it correctly, what we're trying to do is to preserve that statue or monument and protect it so that we can make some decisions later. If somebody else comes in and takes it down and burn it or whatever, then it's a moot point. And so that's my, that's the thing that I think we need to focus on, is the preservation of that statue as well as public safety. And that's where I stand and I think that's where our focus should be right now in trying to make a decision and then we can work out all the other details as far as locating, relocating, or what we're going to do. We got time to do that, I think, at a later time. So I just wanted to share that for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments by Board of Commissioners? We're here now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to entertain a motion to relocate the Confederate monument that's located on Courthouse Square. So I will entertain a motion right now for its relocation.
Mr. Chair, I move that relocate the monument on the Courthouse Square for the preservation and the protection of the monument as well as for public safety.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, seconded by Commissioner Powell, that we relocate the Confederate monument located on Courthouse Square until further determination of its location. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all the favors are aye? In opposed nay? Motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a brief comment and then I'm going to bring this emergency meeting to a close. Currently Confederate monuments are the subject of controversy across our nation and in our county and our state. In fact, such monument has been located in front of our Courthouse Square here in Warren County since 1913. Due to the threats and attempts from members of outside our community and some in our community to deface and remove the monument themselves, today the Warren County Board of Commissioners have made the decision to remove and relocate the monument for public safety and preservation reasons in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 100-2.1. The safety and mutual respect among members of our community is of the utmost concern and most valuable to Warren County Board of Commissioners. We will keep the public informed of our next steps after removal and or relocation of the monument in accordance with the directors and the direction given to us by our state government. Ladies and gentlemen, I just hope, and it is in due part, that I believe and hope that this, this action, though some may seem to be divisionary, that it actually brings us closer. That's what it's all about. If you have the question, why do we do certain things? Why are we here for certain things? It is because we are all human beings. We all want to be respected. We all have history, but we also want to be in charge of our future. Ladies and gentlemen, aboard, I entertain a motion that we adjourn our emergency meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn the emergency meeting.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, seconded by Commissioner Baker, that we adjourn our emergency meeting. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all the favors are aye? Opposed nay? We hereby adjourn our emergency meeting. When y'all are ready, we'll move right into our next meeting. We ready?
I started a petition yesterday and I have over 400 signatures for the statue to be removed and that's the last statement I'm going to write.
Thank you. Do you give a copy to Ms. Angelina? Yes. Good job. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, good job on keeping everything in perspective and decent and in order. I really appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and call our special meeting to order, which is our Warren County Board of Commissioners's special meeting. I'm going to go right into item number four, if y'all okay with that, and that is consider items from the finance office, Mr. Kathryn Bradford, our finance director. Ms. Bradford? I do apologize. I got it, don't worry about it.
The first item that I have is budget amendment, let me find it. Budget amendment number two to the capital project ordinance for the Warren County Water and Sewer District 2, WISI 85, exit 233 interchange project. The interim Public Utilities Director, Macon Robertson, sent me some information and they have, and it consisted of, they want to award, which that's the next item, want to award a, thinking about what it is. They want to award a contract for the construction work in this project and after all the bids had come in and everything, the project ends up being $7,036 more than what was initially budgeted. So we are proposing to increase the budget by $7,036 and those, that, those funds will come from the fund balance in the District 2 Enterprise Fund. And does anybody have any questions about that? And does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Um, the second item was, is to award the bid for the project to H.G. Reynolds Company, uh, at two hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars, and to authorize the county manager to execute the contract upon review, county attorney. Next, we have the recommendation for the adoption of budget amendment number eighteen to the fiscal year nineteen twenty Warren County Budget Ordinance, and this consists of, uh, several different items. Would you like for me to go through those real quick?
Not unless, uh, you have a particular one you don't have to...
Okay. All right, if there are no questions, I'll move on. Um, the next item is the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one pay plan, reclassification request, and position description, and I will defer this one to, uh, Mr. County Manager, Mr. Jones.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Bradford and Chair. Do you want me to provide an explanation for these? The, okay, sure. The, the, the pay plan is one that we adopt annually, and it just, uh, identifies what our, um, salary grades are and the salaries for the respective changes. Uh, they will remain the same. The only ones that have changed is, um, changed are, are the ones related to our Sheriff's Office and the deputies and the sheriff and the, uh, admin staff that are directly considered to be the Sheriff's Office. Um, we have been able to put together a retention plan, and their increase due to our compensation study will, um, take effect on July first, and so those positions, you will see, uh, that pay plan has been updated. Additionally, we have some reclassification requests from a few departments. Uh, they are the Recreation Department, the Senior Center, and the Sheriff's Office has a position as well. The Recreation Department will have a Recreation Coordinator that goes to a Recreation Program Coordinator. The Senior Center has a Nutrition Site Manager that will go from full-time to part-time, and a part-time Medicare Specialist that will go from part-time to full-time, and so those two positions will be combined to create a new full-time position called a Social Worker Two. And in the Sheriff's Office, we have a Captain that will have a reclassification to a Major. So those are the items you have before you, and then there is a position description for the Recreation Program Coordinator that is submitted as well. Thank you.
Uh, before we go back to this, uh, Ms. Bradford, if anybody has any questions or comments for, uh...
Mr. Mr. Jones? Okay, Ms. Bradford?
Okay. Um, next, item D, uh, you have before you the proposed fee schedules for next fiscal year for the Environmental Health Department, the Health Department, and the Home Health Department that were submitted by the Health Department. Um, and those are just for you to consider and approve.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and then lastly, adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Warren County Budget Ordinance. Um, I am not exactly sure how you would like me to proceed. I don't, I can ask if you have questions, or I can review some of the, uh, the summary of the changes that you all were provided.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bradford. I think you're doing a wonderful job, um, and, um, what I'd like to do at this point in time is, um, I think the adoption of the, I think D is the, the final adoption of our, our budget ordinance. Is that correct? Yeah. So what I'd like to first is just open it up for discussion for any of the, um, preceding items for the Board of Commissioners to make a comment, and then we'll just go through the adoption of each one, and then the last one at least, of course, the adoption of our, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, budget. So, I'll look forward to any of the Board of Commissioners. All right, Ms. Bradford, I think you've done a wonderful job for us.
Okay. Well, thank you.
There's, um, I know you've visited long days, long weekends, but we really do appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you.
All right. So, yes, sir. I don't got, look, I would never take anything away from Mr. Jones, 'cause see, he's a seven-day, twenty-four-hours-a-day guy, you know, so, Mr. Jones, you know, I'm gonna leave you out, but I really appreciate you getting this budget together for us. No small task, I know it is, and we thank you all. And I, and I know it was a accumulation of, uh, your entire staff, but I'm gonna let you thank them, but we really appreciate you.
Appreciate that, but you're absolutely right. Uh, we could not have done this with, without our staff and Ms. Bradford leading the way, and so I really just wanted to say, um, thank you for, for that. It hasn't been too terribly difficult, it's just that it's, you know, it takes time, and sometimes we have to be able to have some quiet time to work through it, and so I appreciate, uh, your support in this.
Yes, ma'am. Let me, you can sit down. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, what we're gonna do is I'm, I'm, uh, gonna go right through this, um, agenda with, um, four A, and, um, I'll just offer up emotion, excuse me, consider motions for each one. So the floor is yours as far as offering the motions to pass each one, and we'll just keep it moving right along. So four A, which is adoption of the budget amendment, number two to the capital project ordinance for Warren County Water and Sewer District Two, Y's I eighty-five, uh, exchange two thirty-three interchange project. And, Mr. Kingsbury, can we do one and two just the same? Do it separate. Okay. All right, so that is the, uh, consideration for approval by the Board of Commissioners. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, in, in the event that documentation and everything has been provided for these motions, I would just like to cut through the chase and just basically say I move that we approve agenda item four A one as presented.
Thank you. That is the motion. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, seconded by Commissioner Baker, that we approve item, uh, four A as, as stated. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion is carried. Four two, uh, uh, four A two, which is a warbid for Warren County Water and Sewer District Two, Y's I eighty-five interchange, two thirty-three exchange project to the H.G. Reynolds Company, sum of, uh, two hundred ninety-one thousand eight thirty-one, and authorize county manager to execute the contract upon review by county, uh, excuse me, by review by the, uh, county attorney. That is, um, request, I entertain a motion for approval. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve item four A two as stated. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Motion is carried. Opposed nay? Motion is carried. Thank you. Sorry. Um, four B, adoption of the budget amendment eight, number eighteen, to the fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty twenty Warren County Budget Ordinance, uh, as requested. I entertain a motion for approval. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Hunt, that we are brought, adopt and approve item four B as stated. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion is carried. Item four C, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one pay plan, reclassification request, and position descriptions as, uh, presented here for approval. I entertain a motion for approval.
Second?
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Power, that we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one pay plan, uh, reclassification request, and position descriptions. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion is carried. Four D, which is adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, fee schedules for Environmental Health and Health, uh, Health, Health Department and Home Health. That is a request for approval. I entertain a motion for approval. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Hunt, that we, uh, approve item four D as stated. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion is carried. Um, ladies and gentlemen, uh, four E, uh, I really wanna say in, uh, to, to each of one of you, that this year's budget really speaks to our future as, as county government and the, and the overall health of our county and the progression that we are looking for. Uh, we've been able to, as you can see, we, we, we promoting and supporting broadband throughout the county. Uh, one of the major ones I'm so proud of is that we have took an active investment in our employees, and I really appreciate everything that they do. Um, I just think this, this is, uh, this has been a landmark, um, budget for us, uh, supporting the school system. We, we just moved in all types of fashion when it comes to this budget, and, uh, I really appreciate the hard work that the Board of Commissioners have put into making sure this come, come to place, and Mr. Jones and all your staff, I know we said it before, but I just can't thank you enough for everything that you've done for us. So, with that said, um, I entertain a motion, unless any other Commissioner has any other comments. I entertain a motion for adoption of our twenty fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Warren County Budget Ordinance. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Power, that we adopt our fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Warren County Budget Ordinance as presented. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, move right on to, um, number five, which is consider fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-six Warren County Capital Improvement Plan, which is our CIP. I entertain a motion for approval. Oh, I'm sorry, she gotta talk. I'm sorry. I, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm moving right along here. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go. All right, okay, I'm sorry. I'm moving right along here.
Thank you for allowing me this time, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that.
Oh, fine, fine, that goes.
I will be, um, I will be brief. We are working on getting you, not just the capital expenditures, the capital budget for this fiscal year, but also for the next five years. So, in the fall, we want to present a, a five-year capital improvement plan and really get back on track with using that as a, a living document and a planning document for our budgets to come. So, this year, though, what you have in front of you is just a breakdown of, of the budget you, you've already approved, but it does show you where our capital expenditures are going to, um, break down per category, and so, our capital expenditures for our total fiscal year twenty-one budget are just about four point four three percent of our budget, and so you can see that summary there in your charts. And then I also have a, a spreadsheet here as they break down by category, buildings and grounds, public safety, general government. Um, that's where our county phone system is going to be, our infrastructure is our broadband improvements, and how our fleet breaks down, our, our parks and rec. So we have, uh, just under one million five hundred thousand dollars in capital expenditures in our fiscal year twenty-one budget, and we, um, will bring to you, like I said, in the fall, a, a five-year plan. That's all.
You got on me about that? I'm just messing. Thank you. Mr. Jones, you got something to add to that? Thank you, Miss. Um, Ms. Duncan, I, I appreciate that. Didn't mean to skip on you, I really didn't, but, yes, ma'am, but I, I'll revisit Ms. Baker's, uh, motion for approval, and I think, who seconded that? Uh, Commissioner Power, uh, seconded it. So I'll revisit that motion that is on the floor. Uh, is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion is carried. Um, item number six, and this is consider adoption of the resolution reorganizing, reorganizing the Warren County Economic Development Commission, the EDC, and revised bylaws. So, um, ladies and gentlemen, I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agenda item four six as presented.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, seconded by Commissioner Power, that we approve, um, item number six as presented and stated. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanna make sure if the last version of this doc, the bylaws document, you received it. If not, I just wanna bring it to your attention.
Yes, sir.
That I have, it should have...
This, this another?
Okay. Huh? Make sure, if you look on page three, and make sure there's some green highlight, there is, okay.
Just, mine says second revision top, that was just...
Okay, that's fine.
Which one is?
It's the same thing. Angelina put second revision. I just wanna make sure.
Oh, okay.
If you seen that one, then we're good to go.
Okay, Ms. Kingsbury?
So I just wanted to make sure the one that was put in agenda packet didn't have two things that were brought to my attention.
Yes, sir.
So on page three, in green highlighting, there's just a statement saying after receiving approval of the Board of Commissioners, and then on page five, just for clarity, we made sure we specified it was the Chairman of the Commission. But those are the changes from the, the one that was in the agenda. I just wanna make sure you approve this one.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions in regards to what Mr. Kingsbury just presented to us? Thank you, Mr. Kingsbury. All right, um, the motion's on the floor. Is there no other, uh, further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion is passed. Thank you so much. All right, uh, number seven, and, um, we don't have to go, we don't have any. We don't have anything. So...
Well, let's skip that one.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, skip that one, basically, right? So we're gonna go right on to number eight, and that is adjourn our special meeting. I entertain a motion for dismissal.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn the special meeting.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, seconded by Commissioner Power, that we adjourn our special meeting. Is there any discussion? Thank y'all for so much for coming out. Here none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? We are hereby adjourned. Thank y'all.